Okay, alright.
Alright now. What a beautiful Monday. Alright, first thing we're gonna talk about is Brian Brent is here from Brent Bigg up. And he's principal. Anyway, Brian is gonna suggest tonight, first thing you're not, don't have any answers tonight. The idea tonight is talk about Carter Alley, which we open up bids for demolition on Thursday the ninth. That being said, what do we do next? So what Brian has done is given you some ideas. Nothing definitive, giving you some examples of things that you can play with. Some of the things that you're gonna see in there, you probably like, and some you'll probably dislike, but that's okay. It's kind of narrowing down, you know, what shade of paint you use. Well, we all know we don't want turquoise or orange. So what is the color or what is the design? And that's what we're really talking about tonight. So don't expect any answers from Brian. We're just suggesting here's your options that are available. So Brian has been doing work for the city, I think, for thirty plus years? Brian, forty plus years? Oh, good. Anyway, what the best thing that's happened tonight is you get some ideas, you may not have any answers. And then from tonight, we share those ideas. We're gonna talk about the findings a little bit later, about allocating some dollars. But really what needs to happen is, once we start narrowing our focus and we get the communities endpoint input, then what we're gonna wanna do is hire a design architect that can take what we like or what we dislike, make sure those are discounted, and put on paper things that we can all visually begin to understand at your direction. Go for it.
Okay. So these, the first three pages just sort of show the perspective layouts, and you can see Carter Alley is sort of down at the bottom, Chattahoochee at the top, and Athens Streets down the white inside. And so we've got, you know, it's kind of an L-shaped piece of property there to work with. And so there are several different ways you can lay the thing out, even some that are not shown over here that I was sitting down, scratching around and came up with. So this first one, you can see sort of faces Athens Street off to the right edge of the building, and then it's got parking available. Carter Alley is open to go through. We don't have parking, and this one on Athens Street, we're a little concerned from the point of view if people park there and back out from Athens Street, the cars coming out the hill there, so we may not see them. But we can, part of this one, we can move that building a little to the left and have less parking on the left side of the building and get that parking on Athens Street. And so that's, you know, one shape of the building that, you know, you can put there. We haven't really figured out what to do. The next one is, you can see the building is set up a little different way there. And if you got, facing Main Street, the place that goes buildings would be like commercial, and if you wanted to combine it with residential, the residential people could come off of Chattahoochee and enter from back on the west side, whereas a commercial there where most of the parking is would enter from the east side. And then the third one shows where there's parking sort of off Athens Street, so you pull off Athens Street, park there, but the main commercial park would face Athens Street. And you, it doesn't show it, but this shows Carter Alley is still open, but you can close Carter Alley and make it into, say a sidewalk through there, and then you, the building you could have would be a little larger than it would face Athens Street. So you can see there are a variety of different combos that you could come up with there. In fact, you know there are more that we haven't even seen. And then, I just, for the heck of it, sort of came up with some possible looks, if you will. And this is just sort of what's on the internet. And this first one, number one, is a contemporary with commercial at the bottom and residential at the top. And, you know, we'll tell you that there are cities that are doing this. Alpharetta's doing it, and most everybody's heard about Woodstock. You know, Woodstock is just sort of a downtown gambling place, people live there above the stores. So that, number one, is just a look. Number two is another look, a little more sophisticated, but, you know, that's the L-shaped, they can fit there in that property, not quite that big. You're probably looking at ten thousand square feet to work with of a building. Number three there is just only residential, contemporary, lots of duplexes if you wanted to do something like that. And number four, maybe, maybe all this, the new urban residential look, there's that, but see it's ballpark and walking around, coming in and walking to the store, walking to the grocery store. The last two remind me of Lula. And so number five there is commercial below with residential above. So, or no residential above, but, you know, storage or something like that there. But that's, you know, one look you could keep it out or... And then number six is sort of the same. This is, at least two, five, and six are sort of the historic looks. So that needs to be an improvement over what's there now. So anyway, anybody have thought, oh, these, these were, they're yours, and they're just for sort of thinking and talking purposes. We're gonna have that parking there that's gonna be laid flat.
My first question, while I'm looking at these concepts, if we support a three-story building in that area, is that a property, that's still a property? I mean, this three-story building literally just...
Oh, yeah. You can, you can easily do that.
We're sitting on, they're rocking, we're sitting on them.
We'll make sure those foundations are solid enough for those...
That's the first thing, first thought I had, I saw this, plus the outside stairs are exposed to the weather, so people walking up and down the stairs to either, to the residents, check that, but it's just concept.
What sorts of different ways to do that?
But that's the first thing that caught my eyes.
Yeah. Russell, they started doing this, and, you know, they have parking sort of underneath. And, you know, so the people like it, it's sort of like a gated community, you can pull in there, you park your car, and you gotta have a pass key to get through there. So Russell has a parade every year that goes down the street. This is the year before last, I was sitting across the street from their residential commercial, and they had to block the entrance for the parade, so people couldn't get out or in. So there's a lot of other thought issues like that to think about, and, you know, what you want. First of all, you want residential at all and all, and then you want a combo? Is the general ambiance gonna be sort of a walking thing? You know, you've got your fountain right across the street and things like that, so, you know, Woodstock and Alpharetta and some of these places, you go there on a Saturday night, you can't find a parking there. And so this could be sort of the beginning of something like that for Lula.
I'm only the one down in the conversation, it's caught my mind too. If we create a residential area there, is the city responsible for renting their building? How, how...
So what, we would probably follow what other cities have done, and you would get opportunity to decide the design, what you all would be happy with, and then go to the private sector to try to encourage their development. And you might do a ground lease, but I don't think, the only way the city can take it over is if they did it through the development, which is available. But if you look at what recently Flower Ranch, and certainly the city of Gainesville has done, they set aside, they just, they defined the design that they would be content with, and then they went to the private sector and those developers come in. So I think that would be the same option.
And we're gonna get public input of this, as you're going to...
Yes, we get the public comment. So we're, we're a long way to go. Tonight, what we hope is, say, what do we like, what do we dislike? You know, it's kind of like me saying, picking out the colors, well, really, not picking out any color, but what do you like versus, you know, Brian, you did a very good job showing some different viewpoints, none of which I agree with, except for the last two pages. I'm teasing you when I say that, but that's really what we want to say tonight, is we can begin to guide. And then, same thing, we know there's, it knows like, Brian, you had suggested in one of the schemes that you could close Carter Alley and make that pedestrian walkway. And so that's an option available to you, because we do want walkability. You do want to be able to open Main Street back to this area back in here, if you're gonna go commercial retail route, if you're gonna add the residential element, which is becoming very commonplace for downtown areas. So, I mean, there's a great opportunity.
My only concern with closing it and doing a walk back there is if we do commercial residential, which is what's more in my head, that if we have delivery trucks, then they're gonna be blocking Athens Street or Main Street. If we close them, Carter Alley, they won't have the back road to park to them, if we go to, um, commercial residential.
Yeah, that would all have to be sort of figured out and worked out, and, you know, then you got your doctor, you gotta have a doctor pad, and you don't want to fence around it, and stuff like that. So once you, you know, you say we've got commercial, we've got residential, we've got commercial and residential that we can have, we could have mostly commercial, a little bit of residential. So what do we want? And is that, do we wanna make it sort of a drive, drive-up-to place and park or walk, a walking area that ultimately, you know, the city sort of becomes a place to come, people walk around and do things, and, you know, you've got a great start for that. You've got the railroad station over there and things like that, and so, and a railroad that goes through the area, which is of some interest. So, you know, I don't think it would be that big a jump for Lula to sort of be a destination place for people to come and do things, walk around, do a movie at the railroad station or whatever band. And then, as far as residential, I'm sure you all know that there's a huge demand these days for residential housing. I mean, they're popping up everywhere. So, you know, I don't, it's not like they, they empty.
Part of them look, it's part of them look, but I'm not, it's dark a look.
Yeah.
Ain't it?
Five and six are your historical look, and I, you know, I can't get a drink. But I'd say a little in the downtown area, maybe it could be a historical look, I believe. We all have to play it on our understanding, just my opinion. All that was, that was the one.
That was our initial reaction. So when you look at number one, what the, what the concept of the two stories above, is there a conception where you can take five, six, and integrate it with one and something?
Here's my only concern about that, which the concern even exists, which I prefer more, like Gene said, the historic.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. I think we don't...
It would fit in with that. But looking at the drawings and seeing the amount of parking space that's available, you go putting commercial and residential, then you're gonna quickly run parking space, and then to even think about adding a third floor for a second residential floor, there's not gonna be anywhere pretty much a park. So if you go with the, I mean, I like the idea of the commercial on the bottom with residential on top, I just don't see where there's, where there's near enough parking to accommodate people coming by to shop, the shop owners themselves and employees, then if you're ever resident, it's gonna have two cars per resident on average.
Right.
So, you know, I'm not seeing where there's near enough parking. So again, my question to you is, on the top-left corner of any of these conceptual drawings, obviously, that, that belongs to someone.
Those two other lots?
Yeah. Are those lots even anywhere in vicinity of being talked about to, to purchase that from them? It's not got it yet, or is it not even being considered by...
They purchased those properties because we bought these properties. In other words, they're looking for investments as well. One of them is vacant, so likelihood is they're not, they're not available.
In other words, we couldn't buy that so we could have more parking available to support something like this?
That is a discussion.
One has to be remoboration.
Yeah, one, you could have that discussion, you know, but you'd have to have a public meet, so within, and then it's possible. But we know they purchased both, the same person bought, bought both properties for investments. So it happens to Jeff, they, they've seen what we're doing, and they, this is exactly what we're trying to do here, we're trying to create a nucleus to get people to make investment downtown here. But back to the root question, first, this building that's being proposed isn't that big, so you couldn't put that many residential units up top.
Well, right, and it's a balance of parking and, you know, the front, get as much parking as we can and still have a decent sized building there. Obviously, you can get more parking with a smaller building, so it's a thorough analysis that you gotta weigh that.
Which there's other properties that we looked at that may in future...
And that's our whole, when is the appropriate time for any suggestions that I might have for other properties to bring that up?
So really, you begin to find here, like I said, do we, do we build the proposed buildings where footage, what is this, ten thousand square feet?
We're so hard with that, I think, to make it work.
So that's the question, you build ten thousand square feet, which says you need more parking, and then that makes you go get additional parking access, or you build smaller so you can have more access. I think Brian had suggested that, on number one, where you were looking at on the first page, he, we talked about doing the diagonal parking to put allow them to park off Athens Street. Well, you know, Athens Street's pretty busy, you and I admire that, you see.
Right, yeah.
So that may not be a good option, add more parking, which even if you reduce the building size, you still probably don't want people backing out in Athens. So you already have that problem.
Right there over that hill, though.
Right. That's exactly right. So that's why we don't think that's favorable, but, you know, same thing, I'd let, what you want to accomplish then dictate what you can do with parking. The example I give you, somebody said to me, well, can we put seven garbage dumpsters back there? Well, that's a pretty big sense for us to afford seven dumpster sites back there. So again, it's a matter of what can we afford to, and what's reasonable, and what are you gonna get the most bang for your buck at? What's gonna give you the best value? And parking's not a bad problem, I hope you create a nightmare when you don't have enough parking, because that means you're being somewhat successful.
So when, the second part of my question, what would be an appropriate time?
It would take place in executive session.
To talk about other, well, properties that we already own. I'm talking about something that the city already owns.
So this is what we own already, this is all, there's not another parcel. There's other parcels that we've identified that could be, you know, potentially.
That's what, so when is the best time for me to bring out other parcels that we own that I...
We don't own any other parts, that's what I'm trying to make clear. This is a property we own here, is it? That's all we own.
Right.
And it's, and at this location, it's okay...
Wait a minute, I'm talking about another location, I'm not talking about...
Parking, making money.
I'm talking about another location that has much more property available to do the same thing on a much larger scale.
Yeah, that may also be appropriate for an executive session, just the fact that it is dealing with real estate.
Well, if you're, if you're only owning, you can't talk about an executive session. If you wanna talk, tonight would be, I, I thought you were talking about adjacent property.
No, no, I'm talking about a location blocks, right.
So why don't we, why don't we do this? Why don't we answer all these questions and then start talking about, we can do it tonight for that.
Okay, it's, it's a suggestion, it's an idea, we'd have to do conceptual drawings, kind of like what we have here.
Right.
And it's, you know, just to throw it out there and...
You can leave there's all that parking if you raise the building apart, the parking place is under the building. I'm sorry. You raise the building, build away with it, uh, then you jump that parking bay is parking under the building. Yeah, it's, that's just an option, you lose that space, otherwise we park it out there, but there are a number of them now that they just park under the building. And it's, you know, they like it, out of the rain, it's like a glass, you know, you go upstairs in your house, if you live in...
We, we share a lot of walking there. Not, not walking there, we spend a lot of walking there, a lot of people who walk, walk, uh, over there.
So, so all of these different options and thoughts, that's what, never mind, come up with it. We're like, hey, you know, when the time comes, we'll, uh, put some thought into it and figure it out.
Yeah, I, actually, I love the idea, I love what James said, I would just be concerned, like I said, about, about parking, that can be, you know, be the only issue, but again, I guess like Benny said, maybe that's a good concern to have, is to have to worry about parking, but maybe for the residents that ultimately want to live there, that might not be...
Oh, we wouldn't build one if they couldn't park. That's why I said, in other words, we wouldn't, we wouldn't do that on the short term. If y'all tell us to build something that's that size, we're gonna have to park additional parking, or they're gonna reduce the building to match what you can do for catching.
Yeah, the reason I was asking the question about the first design and incorporating the last two, the looks, because I preserve under downtownness, but the first one would have been two stories. If you look at the second layout plan, there's a residential parking area right there, where could be access for residential only there. My visualization on this would be that you probably want to have about three residential on one level. So if you went two stories high, this is just my speculation, looking at this, be, it would be six, and that would be plenty of parking for six residential units right there, it's kind of what I thought.
And then on the parking on Carter Street, it would be Carter Alley would be the, the people come to shop, and the shop owners and employees and stuff.
It, yeah, the, on the Chattahoochee Street, that would be for the residential access only. It would be gated, so that, that would be, they would have their parking, and then you still have the commercial parking on the other side. That's why I was leaning with me questioning if we couldn't incorporate that with the old, you know, feel.
Yeah, in fact, well, just enough talking, that's a job, you know, sort of residential there, martial here, and then you're sort of tied into the...
Yeah, that's one of this one.
Across Athens Street, you got pizza place and things like that.
Plus, we have access from Main Street, two-parter alley between the laundromat, it's a small strip between the laundromat and the personal building, they've got, there's enough to put in, an access sidewalk, but you wanna open that to the backside as well.
Yeah, we own, we own that property.
Yeah, we own that one strip right there, I mean, it's tight, but I mean, it's not, I bet it's probably eight foot that we can play with, and that's plenty big.
Uh, based on this, you're looking for about fifteen hundred square feet per living unit, or, if, if, if that's just six to the building you got here, basically.
Well, I, I can't believe they're, let's say, one of them was, was months long, it was like, three hundred, I was gonna make one...
Eight, four hundred square feet in one of them.
Yeah, eight, four hundred. We had a residential in nine forty, and then nine hundred. So that's probably, you know, you had two stories, you got five and a half, three stories, a forty guy.
My question is, typically in that area right there, you come out roughly fifteen hundred square foot apartment. There are six, six ones, yes. Fifteen hundred square foot is a nice size. So, yeah, you got them around six, six units per building, right?
And would it be like set up for, as an apartment, or would we want it to be more like a condo where whoever, either they have, they, they own it, it's not just an apartment?
We're probably not there tonight to decide whether, if you like the residential, you'd have to see what the market would think.
But that's a thought, you know, you, that's, at some point, you'll have to say, okay, wanna do this, if you can rental, and it's, uh...
Like I said, you wanna do it yourself, then you got the development authority, you don't wanna do a land lease, where you define what they're gonna build, and you just basically pick up a check, but this, I'm gonna suggest to you, this isn't a moneymaker for the city, but it, it will be a big value to the downtown area. So better than letting the private sector make the investments, the whole community's gonna benefit from it.
Basically, your concept as well, you showed six, six commercial units in the building growing, and that's, that's, that's what we're fifteen hundred, right, for each, each section in around people's.
Yeah.
And that, that's this side, and downtown shop, that's, you make this side shop.
Yeah, and you're gonna pay, you got the stairs, and, you know, things like that, but, but, yeah, it's like five or six, something like that. And, and thirty, thirty foot wide floor, and that one.
From the ground floor, I, I, thirty foot wide shop. Basically, your constant, just, you, you, your constant, see, see what we can lay in there, what you got here, and how to figure it out.
What tickles your fancy? That's what we want to load up.
Uh, so here's another, I'm trying to see, do you by any chance have an approximation what the distance is in feet from, say, this parking space right here to the curb?
Uh, yeah, we should really figure it out.
Yeah, you got the scale on, you don't get my scale on.
Yeah, well, there, there's a scale down there, it looks to be...
It looks to be more than sixty?
One might be sixty feet.
Sixty feet?
I would say fifty to sixty.
I'm just comparing it to the width of the building, which would be sixty feet, taking that width and compare it to that, it looks to be about, it looks to be about the same, but I didn't know, you know, how, how to scale this was, there were maybe some, but... It looks to be about the same, but I didn't know, you know, how, how to scale this was, there would maybe some, but, um.
So, let's see. So on the inch, there's about forty five feet, is that what it is?
Just skills.
Yeah, one inch is twenty feet.
It is reduced. Up for this thing.
Yeah, that's, that's all larger sheet, yeah.
Are, are you, are you referencing like, uh, this is the first rendition?
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm, you know, sitting here going through my mind, the, the possibility of having a longer building right here on Carter Alley, turning Carter Alley into just, you know, a sidewalk, which gives you more room to, to come out into Carter Alley with the building with the sidewalk in front of it. And that leaves all of this parking that you can get out into, to Chattahoochee. So I'm just, just.
That is a good idea, and I think you could actually put an additional building over there as well. And with all of the additional parking, considering that, that would increase the parking, if I'm just looking at this correctly. You'd increase your parking by thirty five, forty percent and still have another smaller office.
So you propose them commercial or residential doing it that way?
Or both.
Or both?
Um, I would say that in this situation, if we're just doing, you know, if we're gonna do a long building right here, that that would just be like retail, restaurants, whatever, um.
Would you go to stores on that and do that?
Again, I would be concerned about, um, about parking.
Well, if you did that, you gotta open up that whole back porch.
Mm-hmm. That's what I'm saying, it would open up all of this parking.
Yeah.
If you went here with cart and had, had a long strip on Carter Alley, which would be like restaurants, retail, whatever. Um, I mean, I love the look of the two story, and I love the idea of having some residential condos or however they would get ultimately decided to be. Uh, I would still, again, be concerned about parking, like, let's say you're the resident that lives on the second floor right here, and close to the spot, you can get parked over here, you got ten bags of groceries, you gotta get to your, to your house.
That's why I was blocking the second.
So, I mean, they ought to have retail and that. That's not, if we were to do it so that it is residential and shop, but the shop owners own the upstairs residential, you know, there's that option too.
So we look at the same thing that Denise brought up earlier. We originally thought that maybe making a second frontage on Carter Alley with the buildings all facing Carter Alley, and then the issue of deliveries, pickup and that sort of things. And so at the end of the day, they ended up going back to that corner.
Right. That's, that's my question, if you were talking residential or commercial, because I feel like, and, and I come at this because my husband's in commercial construction. So I'm looking at it from, um, from that aspect, and when they get on these streets, around Georgia Tech, and they have deliveries, um, we're, we're looking at a lot more traffic there than here, but they even had to, um, go in and, and schedule their deliveries where.
Yeah, it's.
Where they get a lot of traffic, frame the tractor and trailers, or even the box trucks, the bigger trucks, because you've got an issue with delivery. So if you're wanting to bring in retail and they don't have a good delivery system, place for the trucks, then, then we're backing up and we're, we're creating the issue that in the work we're fighting. And I, I just don't want to, to see us create more issue than, not that I don't like that idea, because I think that would be beautiful and you've got the walking space and you could do a lot with it. Um, but we don't need to create a problem, find a fix for it. That's definitely issue with that.
Well, and I, I'll take you to Cornelia. If y'all have admired some of the renovations they've done downtown over the last five years, and, uh, what is the? Let's see, they've got Big Daddy's on one side, they've got.
Fenders.
Yes, Fenders, as an example.
The old man.
And parking is still a premium. What a great problem to have, but you go by there on a Friday and Saturday night, you're probably gonna think back to yours, staying, well, we better get there early, because we, you know, we got two blocks, blocks anyway. So we don't wanna create it, but at the same time, we do wanna create the man.
I know, um, I'll just throw this out here. Um, I've learned that, quite a bit of broke, but just shocking to me is how much they actually did in their downtown area. But they involved their problems, of course, with, uh, parking garages, um, that they had to mix into their trees. But they're not necessarily front, you know, on the main streets, you actually have to, you know, go off onto the side to get to some of those, uh, projects now. Um, Mr. Ren, I think you also mentioned Woodstock.
Right, thank you.
One of the things that I saw in Woodstock, and I know we kind of talked about this, is Woodstock a couple of different designs that they did. They have a large sky rise, high rise thing, so at least six stories, maybe even more than that.
I can tell you.
Maybe more. And, and, but that's further off their Main Street. On their Main Street, they kept with the same facade that it originally had, except they did, uh, concept that included like three stories instead of the original one story. It looks the same, but it's three stories high. And so they have multiple, you know, residential on top of that, which of course increased their tax side debt for the sale tax that they were, you know, incurring with that, in, in addition to the, the residential. Um, and I believe that they did kind of what Chip was mentioning, um, with the sales in a condo format where it's ownership rather than, than, than leasing, but it's mixed, it's, it's throughout, and they have different, different buildings. Um, I was very, I was very impressed with, with Stock and how they did it, because they have a very similar problem that we have here. They are built right up along the railroad. Um, so there wasn't, I mean, when they started building, it's like, where are we supposed to drive? How can we possibly get through here? And they just kept building back further away from the railroad. And it's almost like they ended up building an additional city that wasn't there before, um, in areas that were underdeveloped or not developed at all. They just replicated what the city was or could have been, had they planned it and done it and had the funds to do it, you know, eighty, a hundred years ago. It was interesting to see how they did it. So if anyone has an opportunity to, to travel out to Woodstock, I know it's, it's quite a ways, but it is another railroad locked town, uh, for sure.
So we talked about taking over everybody over there. Another unique thing about Woodstock development was they went bust once.
Mm-hmm.
And so they started that, uh, before two thousand eight, then the two thousand eight bust came through and then ended up going bust once, but they, of course, uh, you know, which is to their credit, at the end of the day, you know, they got new investments in that even enhanced it even more than they originally, uh, looked at. Let's, let's question this. On the facade, y'all all seem to be lending yourselves more to the historical facade, where we match authority downtown and then shooting it. Is that good with you, Chip?
I'm for number five all day long.
Amen. Gee, uh, Dean, how about you? Garnett, you wanna find it, solve it, huh?
No, I'm willing to go with.
Okay. Joe?
Oh, yeah.
Denise, we know, tell me you're good with that?
Yeah, I, I am leaning towards five and six, but with limitations to go up.
Yeah, that's, that's.
So when you look at historic preservation, you walk each building, it'd be a little unique, even if some will shop. Uh, so that's where they found success in redeveloping the downtown, even existing towns that have been, uh, renovated. And so same thing, we can take that to a design engineer and say, we like these type of features, you're not there yet, but you're close.
Yeah, o- ultimately, we would like to have, you know, public hearing, or not hearing, but.
Public comment.
Public.
Same thing, but same thing that we have is, we wanna get some more conceptual ideas. You've got two right now. This is too early to say, this is what we build, that's not what we wanna do. You'd wanna give them, we're probably, you know, three or four months away from the design component, where then you come back and say, okay, here's your best use of property, here's what you could do, and conceptually, here's some design facades you can figure on.
Is this something that we could have, um, headed, headed by the planning commission, where we could have an open path perhaps at the depot, or everyone could kind of walk through and look at the concept?
Same thing. We put up all the storyboard boards and let them play with them from there.
Mm-hmm. Excellent.
We don't wanna just say, this is what we're building.
Exactly.
This, we wanna give them some options, and for the same, same reason we're having tonight. How much can you build residential? You know, that's gonna be new to a lot of folks. How much commercial retail can you build? As you pointed out, you wanna have restaurants, cafes, those type of things. You know, so we do want walkability, we know that. We want, you know, that in the current nucleus, like those two adjoining properties, that's why they're improving on that. They wanna see, take advantage of it. That's what we want. Want private sector to walk in, see opportunity and run with it. But y'all can, y'all can set the beginning design. And, you know, the community should dictate that. So nothing's been, we're, 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 we're at least three months away from getting some conceptual designs in here. And that's more about what y'all end up telling us and, and y'all from there.
Trying to move that, this, is that a proposed sidewalk or a narrow street, this little section right here? Oh, I'm sorry, God, I just hear you can get down purpose.
Which one you live in?
Oh, oh, yeah, up there.
It appears to be a lot of division.
I'm, I'm, is there a proper line there or is it? I'm not sure what that is. You have a little, see, there's a little walk there.
No, that's not a walk.
That's the whole problem, okay.
Yep.
I'm wondering, so you can now leave the forty.
Yeah.
It's a button tip, I guess. It wants you to, yeah. So that, this is the big piece over here.
That was part of the original purchase, right? That, that piece that we're talking about, the narrow.
Yeah, we purchased all the contiguous, all of the contiguous.
Let me see, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, what is that?
Well, good question, and you stopped there for a minute.
Okay, question. So building on what Chip was suggesting, if we have this parking area, is there a way to design it to where you could have delivery trucks come through the parking area maybe? I'm just trying, I mean, I like the idea that Chip had a lot of the idea with the sidewalk and all that. I'm just, the trucks, the delivery trucks, and we've got to make that accessible if we want the retail to come in there.
Yeah, exactly right.
And, um.
And, and we haven't really figured out all those details out that much, but that's important.
You could redesign that and street.
Yeah, if we redesign this, if we do that and redesign the parking area, we can fix it to where.
It's like, was it forty foot wide, third type of, right, five note?
We have eighty foot right away right there.
So you can take this out, move this over this way, and you get, you have it back here, because.
Like a delivery strip, right here.
But, but, yeah, much of this commercial that you see, that's exactly what you're talking about. There, there needs to, needs to be a way, and it doesn't have to be real deep, because that part lengthwise here.
Well, what, what Chip was saying, run the building this way, if we did.
So that would, to have both, the walkway to the front and access in the back, you really got a, there, there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think that, uh. Yeah, number three ad vibes would probably be the, the best, they shifted over to that loading room, uh, and a door loading. I mean, for, for, for option, I, I wanna call it, the, the third map that we have. I know you discussed, you know, like residential units, quantity of residential units, but what about quantity of retail units? Or were we, were we, did we indicate how many we were thinking would be acceptable?
That depends, you know.
Interior building is gonna be defined by use of property.
Right, so you, you might get a big restaurant in there, um, and they make up half the space.
I'm seeing, you know, typical, you know, typical commercial, running, like, if you went front to back seventy feet, you're looking at maybe putting four units in there at both.
Four is probably a good number.
Mm-hmm.
I'd love to put one on a red floor. Much, much. Two thousand square feet?
Yeah, well, what I had to address is possibly put a truck in back.
Yeah, I think you got two options there.
Put it right back. Not, not just that one, it's a.
Yeah, you could just front, take the back way.
Yeah, two to the top. What we hope will happen is the backside of Carter Alley, existing half units that are on Main Street now, that they may see the benefit of improving the backside of their properties too. I mean, really.
Yeah.
That could be, I, I promise you, those that have the land should take advantage of it. You know, they can create even two facades, their front, Main Street, front Carter Alley.
That, that would have been, just for those interested, the, the building in that free, you know, being a hundred and thirty five feet lengthwise and seventy feet deep. You know, you're looking, if you were using four units, you're looking at about thirty five feet wide, which is pretty good for, you know, I mean, any, any particular white lock space for retail, um, that's about right. Um, with twenty, almost twenty four hundred square feet inside. So that's, that'd be, that'd be more units, obviously someone could divide that even smaller if they wanted to, for whatever reason. Or have a very, very large restaurant, combining the two, uh, in this space.
Any one other comments would you have on this?
Well, I'm kind of grinding about having a little bit of walking, like walking there. All of them. Before I was, uh, native was delivery. They've got, might be, they got the place, delivery stuff. Yeah. The product you're going to enter, uh, selling R and D. Retail.
Yep, good point. That's a big deal.
Yep. That's, I'm, 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 I was, we had some delivery, we don't need to park out on that, it's, it's, it's like, taking up all the parking space and, and weather. Call or, or, or whatever they're gonna be. Be, uh, displaced by a delivery truck.
Well, believe it or not, a lot of the merchants that end up in retail, what we end up doing will define what they end up building. So, it's like the restaurant, the restaurant can put a lot of demands on delivery, uh, versus a hair salon, a real estate office, an insurance broker, all of those things. They end up defining what your, where it puts. Chip, what's your thoughts? What haven't we talked about?
We're gonna do in the grocery store.
Oh, I doubt that's important. It could be. Yeah, but I, I tell you thing, I think it defines itself, because Brian wouldn't have everything in grocery store.
That's a good point.
Building three, six, five.
Amen.
That's right. So I've been, I've been growing the column. I have a few thoughts, one that I'm looking into this, one is about here in the location we're talking about. So on the second drawing, the second map, uh, second map, um, going back to, you know, since we do this, commercial with residential on top, which I like that idea, having the spaces in the back parking just for residents, I like that. Um, I'm wondering, can we, uh, cause this looks to be like a lot of um, space that we could come over with just a little bit more and even add. um, space that we could come over with just a little bit more and even add, of, you know, a little bit more of the building, a little bit more parking. But then over here, off of Chattahoochee Street, we could build off of here, an alley that comes to the side of the building. And, you know, if we just have to make it so that, you know, they got to deliver the twenty-six foot box truck and not an eighteen wheeler. Cause that'll think they're going to have for Chattahoochee Street here, they wouldn't have a wide enough, um, uh, right away to, to back an eighteen wheeler, back into here. But if we, if we were to make that an alley right there, that they could unload and, and deliver to the, um, to the places that are in there. Um, and then like I said, come out, just a little bit more, because I don't think we need, you know, twenty, nearly forty feet of, of vegetation out front there. I think ten feet would be more than enough, you know, um, but that's just my opinion.
I literally just said that, Tommy, it just came out of my mouth, I said, what a quick span that could ever put an alley right here for delivery.
Every, every single thing. Great minds, they go out, it's consensus down here, great minds, they go out.
So you guys took.
You get credit for those tips.
No. Don't let that stay in your eyes. Do you have any great additions of markets there? You got a lot of great additions there.
Yeah. But that, the other thing is, it has everything to do with the ultimate goal that we're trying to do, but just a completely different location.
All right, and we're going to talk about that. Let's finish up these comments, then we can talk about that, because there's some things, you know, there's been conversation in the past, and y'all are truly being lighted on that. All right, Brian.
I have a little problem with what I want to.
Garnett wants mayor's final.
Really like number five, you're claiming really. Oh, God.
Oh, we're not taking that color yet.
Franklin Gold's getting two.
Hello. Not on board and still.
You like a really good room. Yeah, yeah, that's really pretty, what are you looking at?
All right, Mr. Mayor, we're commenting a few one ahead.
I think I've been there all month, about.
All right, Denise, here's your chance to trump Chip.
No, he, he said exactly what I went over here and was telling Tommy, and as soon as I was telling Tommy, what if we do this? Chip spoke up and said, I didn't pull what I just said. But I liked what Chip said, I said, we can expand that out and bring a delivery entrance there and make this sidewalk and bring this in and I would give them parking, that I, I agree. I agree with that.
And honestly, we can even take the dumpster pad, make more parking with that, and put the dumpster pad on the back of the alley where the trucks back up.
Where the delivery trucks.
And then the dumpster guy can come into the alley, pick up the dumpster, and now we've got, you know, more parking spot. Heck, you can make that parking spot for motorbikes, they love it.
Our key body works.
Your body works. Your body's working, yeah.
Our key body works. Where on?
All right, Tommy.
The look concept number five, just like Garnett said, I love that. With the caveat, make it three stories. Um, as far as the map concept goes, concept number two, just like Chip and Denise stated, I really like that one. If that can work with those modifications, making an alley, uh, extending the building out further, reducing the, the vegetation line on Athens Street. Actually, there's something else that both you, Chip, Chip and Denise said, it was, uh, Carter, and when we reviewed, did you mention Carter Alley, um, reducing the vegetation in Carter Alley as well?
Um, I mentioned making Carter Alley a sidewalk instead of a road, if we done that, if we did the.
With the exception of the, the loading, the loading zone happening to exit, yeah.
We would have to do the entrance coming on the Athens Street.
Which they all want to do.
But it's, it certainly turns them to, to look at, so, yeah, map two, uh, with loading zone behind the, or on one side of the building, lengthening it longer than a hundred and twenty feet. All of those ideas that, uh, that Chip had stated and Denise had stated.
We're still, we're still gonna be set. So, I'm glad that, I'm just so excited, we can't go so far, because you know, you dropped the line, you can't move the, right there.
Mm-hmm. Uh, I'm sorry.
This is the property line here.
So that's, 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 no, we can't go any further.
You guys, you guys.
Yes, wait, 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 that's not true, there, I mean, it's not uncommon for downtown areas to have zero setbacks. So, I mean, that's something y'all will have to factor, and something, if you do it for one, you, you know, what you really want here is, and Brian related to it, you want connectivity. You mentioned the depot, we're still looking at propane yard, the veterans park, well, you know, and then we've got these other two parcels. One's already been improved upon, the other one's vacant. What you hope is, is that same thing will happen, is you'll attract more private sector money, so they can duplicate what you're doing. So, you know, you don't want to begin to close the door, very similar to what Tony said. I think that building is eight stories that you're talking about, that's off the main track. I mean, it puts back probably football a bit further, if not more than that.
Yeah, not with the, it's have.
The whole environment changes, everything, zero lock lines on the front, but on the back, as you get back to more greenway back in that area as well. So, you know, same thing, you make, you know, what you do for one, you, if it works, you'll want to do for others, because it works. So, uh, setbacks for, you know, that's what our down ground is now, we've got zero lock lines on all of it. So look at that opportunity and see what you can do.
Long as we have sidewalks.
Well, I've been saying pedestrian factor can't be underrated. It's got to be the key, because not only do you want people to live, work and play there, but you want them to be able to come on the weekends. And, like Chip said, if they got to walk a half a block, they want to make it worthwhile, their trip, and make it easy for them to get there. All right, what else? Now we're going to talk about Chip's idea.
Mr. Rip, these are. Yes, very important. And actually, now I know exactly who I can go to to present concept drawings for the idea that I have, if it's even agreeable. We currently have two ball fields that haven't been used in, I don't even know how long.
Right.
They're sitting there doing nothing, nobody's using them, probably not going to use it because Cornelia's got beautiful, not Cornelia, um, Homer has got beautiful ball fields that they're just adding on to. Gainesville's building the second ballpark, Cornelia's got beautiful ball fields, they just don't be used, it's property that's been used. So, the idea that I had was to grade all that out and line each one of the four streets with exactly what he just showed, is like, what drawing five. Buildings on, names the roads, but, you know, Main Street, whatever.
So here's a good.
Athens Street right here.
Top.
All right, and have openings in between each corner, have a big, huge opening that goes into the center, where it's a gigantic green space.
Add all of them.
Counters, uh, bears.
So you're going to love, we've looked at that in the past with the idea that, you know, it's, that's a bigger idea. This was important, so this was prioritized, but we've actually sat down with, uh, some design engineers for that bear, and all we're doing is duplicating what other communities have done. So, almost what you defined, not stealing Denise's idea like she tried to steal yours, but it's the same, what, you have a greenway in the middle of it? You have all these opportunities for commercial retail or service industry, that's where you have your hair salon, your nail salon, all those different elements. They drive people downtown. We're actually look all the way from Pine Street all the way up to Wall Street, so that entire area could redevelop. Not just the ball fields, again, that's another nucleus you build, can grow from.
So, when looking at what can we as, as a council do to bring revenue into the city without taxation for, for the residents, with property taxes? As long as I'm sitting here, I'd like to kick that can as far down the road as I can. So what can we do to bring revenue into the city? Well, if we had something as big as this, it could potentially bring a lot of revenue to the city, through the sales taxes, correct me if I'm wrong, we would get the sales taxes.
So we only get, you have to understand, sales tax aren't locally developed, you only get a percentage of population. So you could, uh, actually, Gainesville loves to have this argument all day. The majority of sales tax, and they're probably right, is collected in the city of Gainesville property, but yet the division is done by population, so it does go back, unfortunately, being the devil's advocate. Sales tax is important, so you want to generate that, but property values are important, and an area like that, you could designate that one area, which is exactly what they've done in Gainesville, Oakwood, and Flower Ranch, Brazelton, as well, they have a designated tax district. So those improvements are paid by the people that live there, not everybody else.
So my only concern, if, if we were to ever do something as, as, as grand and as, as big as what the ball field could potentially offer us, what would happen to this investment here? What would happen to these few businesses that we put here? Would, would we still?
I think, we just, we have to pay for all, I think, this is your best opportunity, that's why they forward us, to enhance downtown. That area down there would just be an extension of everything, because of the connectivity.
Okay.
You have the walk-in trails, uh, I can say this now, probably get shot in the back of my head, but that's why, that's one of the reasons why we initially wanted to acquire, uh, morticash property, because we saw the connectivity of that property with the depot, with the downtown area, with our parks and what have, same opportunity here. I wouldn't worry about it, you, they're not going to build, if you're using private sector money, they're not going to build, uh, what's going to take away or their business support for it again. So, but we need to take y'all down to Swanee and see what they've done down there with some of their areas. Woodstock is the best example, because they went from zero to a hundred. Of course, they had the bones in the road to do that, in other words, they didn't have much, they had less to work with than we did. I mean, truly, they did. They took the railroad advantage, which was cheap, and were able to acquire all that, you know, from the private sector. So the same opportunity, that's.
So, just another suggestion, in the meantime, obviously, because of what we're doing with Carter Alley, anything we might even potentially consider doing with ball fields, if there were to be a consideration, if the citizens are like, hey, yeah, that sounds great, that would obviously be a long way down the road, because we got this going on right here too.
True.
But, uh, in the interim, in trying to, to make Lula a destination place, what can we do in the interim to repurpose that six acres right there to be able to host, um, carnivals? And have larger space for parking, for fairs, for the, um, for railroad days, for, um, Lula Fall Festival? As those things grow and increase, we're, we're going to outgrow the, the parking lot for the depot, and we're going to be needing that someplace else to hold that second event, could potentially become larger, and, and more people are coming to Lula as a destination place.
Excellent. This is where it starts.
Yeah, I, I wanted to make mention, before we get too far away from Chip's idea regarding the, the ball field concept. Um, I, I, I go along with his vision on that, it's incredible idea. Uh, Denise, you've been working with that as well, and I know when we talked about, you know, retail and the entryways on corners and things like that, and I wanted to throw this out there as well. Um, was thinking, uh, that developing something like that would open up ways for, uh, perhaps the greenways and connectivity in that, in respect for biking, things like that, making this more of a destination location, where people will be coming in and traveling in. Uh, I know Woodstock did the same thing, uh, they, they cater to travel coming in on, on, on bicycles. Um, and I see also, um, where we have breaks in the retail, um, not necessarily only on the course, but you could also have, uh, playgrounds and things like that on, on the side of the streets that wouldn't necessarily take up or, you know, pose a a hindrance to, like, festivals and, and concerts and things of that nature that would, that would want to take up that interior space. So you would actually have, you know, playgrounds there first throughout, uh, the retail area. Just another idea, I think this idea is, is fantastic, and we can just kind of grow, and it will also, in my opinion, not attract from what we're talking about here as first items. But it would also, uh, I think it would attract more residential coming from fifty-one and fifty-two as we, as we leave, start leaving the city, that all of that will then start wanting to, to come towards us a little. Just an option.
I think you'd see, if you, what Chip's talking about, good thing is, we can probably make some minor improvements there that aren't a big capital investment, that would enhance what we're already doing. We all learned a lesson when Fall Festival got moved down there, that that's not a bad location, so how do you enhance that? But if you, the good news is, you wouldn't have to make a major capital investment and yet benefit from it, until the other things mature to where the demand is for them. Plus, if you ever build the conceptual idea that you're defining in that park area, which frees nor move new storefronts, residential blocks, you're going to see the surrounding properties improve too.
Mm-hmm.
Which is the key.
And property values would go up in that, in that area as well.
And, and I do want to say one more thing, that Denise and I had the wonderful opportunity to take some training of the Havertrain County at, uh, one of the E and C locations. And, uh, it was the Georgia Academy that, that put on the training, and they brought in, uh, a representative from Georgia Power, um, that was responsible for a lot of the developments, you know, emanating from Atlanta all the way to the, the farthest corners of our state up here in the north, northeast. One of the things that's a big takeaway in the training was that we need to develop our four lanes, which is our three sixty-five area, and protect our Main Street. And I think that doing what we're doing here with these different concepts, both with, with Carter Alley and possibly with the ball fields, is doing just that, is very intentional, uh, a protection and, and a design that looks like our Main Street as it always should have been, and allowing the larger developments to refer out on three sixty-five, so on, so forth. And I know the, the, the thing that I've always just heard for every year I've been here is, who want a grocery store? That might be on three sixty-five.
It'll, that, that'll be, that location, that's going to be access.
Yeah, and, and I don't mind it there.
Brooke Roberts.
I'll go there all night.
But, you know, there was also a talk years ago, we'll finish this up, we always thought the corner of three sixty-five, Lula, Highway fifty-two, and Athens Street would all become commercial stuff. Well, the world has changed as we know it. Think there's potential for that commercial retail element, your grocery store, because of access. Uh, but obviously, well, back to your concern, we don't want to lose downtown, well, that was our big concern. We didn't want to lose our opportunity for downtown redevelopment. And Tony, you said, best, Brooke Roberts is the gentleman, you were talking about from, Brooke Roberts. And he said, you know, you do, you knew you could make a, uh, I think you used the word, a conscious decision to protect your downtown area, which means you're going to commit dollars to enhance that, and that's really what you want to do, and which I think opens up the ball fields eventually. You make this successful, I think that's how that stereots of opportunity down the road.
And I say, the key to all of it, according to Brooke Roberts, is your water and your sewer. And he, he made the comment that Lula has done a phenomenal job at making sure that our water and sewer is the, the attraction.
You get all the credit, Brian.
You've been here for a whole year, you're like, you're, you put on a show for them down in Jamesville with that water and sewer, they're all complaining about low capacity and all these high prices and everything, Dennis gets up there and says, well, here's ours. We've got capacity in this one, and we can expand it two more times. Anyway, it was fun.
I'm proud to be in Lula, because, you know, I, I know that's kind of odd, it's like, well, we have great water and sewer. I'm proud to be in Lula.
For that, we're going to do that. Mr. Mayor, anything else you want to talk in the work session? I had one item that I wanted to discuss in general. Uh, I told y'all, unfortunately, I'm having, uh, surgery next Monday, and my idea was, could we change the meeting Tuesday? And I'm not so sure if we can change the meeting Tuesday, I don't know what condition or shape I'll be in come Tuesday, that's my concern. And I'm not so sure if we can change meeting Tuesday, I don't know what condition or shape I'll be in come Tuesday, that's my concern.
Well, that's why I was asking for coverage.
Yeah, well, you know, I keep thinking about this, every time they put us to sleep, I love that, y'all have the same way, it seems like bouncing back takes you, feels like you feel the effects of them putting sleep for a day or two. The idea is, is that, you know, I can be more comfortable the next day than I was the day I went in there. Uh, but I just don't know how good I'm, I'm feeling, but, you know. Swearing that I can be here Tuesday night, is, I think if my surgery was earlier than the day on Monday, it's not till two thirty, I'd feel a little bit better about, you know, how I might feel at the end of the day about Tuesday. I just don't know if we oughta aim toward Tuesday, of course, y'all can do it without me, which I'm all in favor of. I just take the fact, you know, you gonna be here, and I'm like, I'll be.
Got the kitchen.
That was practical.
I got the kitchen right there. That was my first stop, starting with, but what do I do? I'm just.
Well, you know, the more I think about it, the more I'm not so sure I'd be back at a hunt.
I think I have a little, little part, Joey's not here, I found a little part, cause we normally have a, we, we have occasion, they get.
Well, I thought Joey was forming about, and he, you know, saying, we put the notice out, he had to put it out in advance, I already made it up, for that matter, but the same thing, it was like, I was thinking about today, so, uh, you know, even Joey said, will you come in later in the afternoon? Well, no, there's gonna be a big agenda anyway for Tuesday work session, and I'd be out all day Monday anyway, cause, uh, obviously, for that reason, I wouldn't be able to come back and put it all together for Tuesday, that kind of works a little bit. Not the habit, I call it the dog and pony show, but it's better than that. Sunday, it looks like it's.
Do we go to Thursday?
Let's see, once y'all. Uh, he said that he wasn't, you know, he, he kinda was concerned about when he could be available too, but we didn't talk any dates.
I think Thursday is what, the sixteenth?
Yes.
It was probably, all right, so, he's still threatening to leave on the following Monday.
We had that work session.
Doing it ahead.
Those are all things for y'all to back.
Thursday, I have plans. If y'all, I'm, that's fine, if it works for all y'all, I, I can attend on Thursday, but that is, if the rest of you weren't, then I'm okay. Uh, I just, I can't be here Thursday.
Wednesday's Mordecai Wilton's birthday.
I don't know, we do. He's not the oldest person in Lula.
It's also Mordecai's birthday too.
I met a lady that was ninety-nine years old, she can give me an ounce of coffee.
That's a, Mordecai's catching up.
Wednesday.
Sure, it's not the same father. But availability, I feel better about Wednesday.
I'm fine with any day, if you guys decide.
Same here.
Where's the ideas?
We only did Wednesday good with you.
Yeah.
Then we'll go. Brian, you've been too good to us since I'm on yours, Lord. Yep.
Okay. I mean, it's kind of a few minutes late, but I can, I don't know.
Brian, you want to throw anything else out there to these guys?
Well, he had his swimming right there.
I think it's, come in.
Up to the mayor, Mr. Mayor, you want to hear any more public comment?
Come on.
Yeah. I think people steal all my business on there.
Go ahead. Okay, only, uh, parking's behind the horse alley, behind the Main Street, now, for example, I go down to any Martin furniture, I'm gonna do something with. Now, we have stoplights, then also we have fire and, um, animals parking, we take them to hire and do stuff, I mean, you consider that on any side of these roads. For example, in my big truck, everyone, you know, I got a truck, okay, um, I go in and help these buildings, I put the parking, he made for unloading.
Yes, I'm gonna take him.
And for the unloading, he'd use it for the fire and the retail, you know, for the big truck, you know, you do like two or three down, you know, in that area, they gonna park right there, and then they can put their British greeting.